Counsel, if you will, come to order. It is 7:00 PM and we have convened into our regular meeting for Tuesday, May the 22nd. We do have a quorum. We are missing Councilmember Kurtz, who may be able to get back from a business trip before we finish our meeting tonight. At this time, we are going to convene into executive session for a period of time. So, once I read this, we'll go into executive session. Pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meetings Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney under subsection two, to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, specifically breach of contract issues, procedures, and claims. Item B, Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate. The purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, north of State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of town limits. Councilmembers Schaffner and Kurtz place this on the agenda. Item C, Section 551-074, personnel matters under subsection one, to discuss or deliberate the appointment, evaluation, and duties of a public officer or employee, mayor pro temp. It is 7:02 and we are in executive session. If you want to go to the conference room, everybody? Counsel is returning from recess at 7:43. It's a good thing we have this little device, or I wouldn't know if you ever wanted to speak. All right, item number seven. Remarks to and from Ryland Rowe. Councilmember place three. Ryland, would you like to make any remarks after your hard-fought win?
Sure, yeah. Just glad to have opportunity to do it for three more years, and this will be my last term until term limits kick in. So, after that, we'll see. And hold your breath for that, those outgoing remarks in three years, I guess. And that's all I got. K-Mag, yo-yo.
Okay, counsel. Anybody on counsel wish to make any remarks?
Sure, I do. I gotta think, are you the only elected three times without a opponent?
At least since we went to head-to-head. You know, we did at-large prior to 2010, seats were elected at-large, so there was...
Amazing. Opposed three times? Well, it shows that the people respect what you do.
Thank you, sir.
So, congratulations to you, Ryland.
Alicia, you have anything?
Sure. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you for another couple of years, at least. And thank you so much for your guidance and help through my first year of council. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Phillip. Okay. You go by the adage, if there's nothing good to say, don't say anything? Okay.
The unspoken ones.
Ryland, I don't know that I've said this in the last years as we went through, obviously, the PD 30 things, but really appreciated all your involvement in that and your guidance in those difficult times for us. You really added a lot to trying to craft something that was successful for the Citizens Trophy Club.
Thank you, sir.
And very much appreciate that.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right. We will then move on to item number eight. Receive an update from town staff and take appropriate action regarding town maintained property with acquisition potential for adjacent property owners. Councilmembers Schaffner and Jensen places on the agenda. And staff, I guess Tom, you're going to start with that.
I am. As council remembers, back during the April 24th meeting, staff was given direction to seek to acquire property adjacent to the Woods property along Trophy Club Drive, excluding the brick wall, and also to seek to acquire property along Indian Creek Drive, behind Cypress Court, excluding the fence area, in exchange potentially for maintaining the property. Staff was also directed at that time to let the property owners know that they should approve, that should they approve the acquisition, the town would pay all the fees associated with the transaction. And then, as you may recall, on the May 8th meeting, Councilmember Schaffner requested additional specificity with regard to the properties along Indian Creek Drive. In conducting a review of the properties along Indian Creek Drive, I think I have a map here for you, you'll see that staff has come up with the identification of 10 properties that would potentially be impacted by the potential to seek to acquire those properties. And as the map would indicate, those properties are two, Trune Drive, and then 11, 13, and 14, Mirrorfield Court, 1, 2, and 4, Cypress Court, 11, 12, and 14, Colonial Court, as you can see on the map. And then, staff took it one step further, and we looked to make sure that we were able to give counsel with great specificity the locations in the woods. And as you can see from the woods map, the properties that would be identified for potential acquisition would be 1, Michelle Court, 7, Michelle Court, 9, Jennifer Court, 10, Jennifer Court, and 11, Jennifer Court. And then, following that, it would be staff's intention to mail letters to the property owners and then seek to set up a meeting where we could discuss the potential acquisition of the property that would exclude the fence areas or the wall areas, or return the maintenance responsibility to the homeowners. And in the case of the Woods property in particular, we would also be seeking to transfer the water and electric meters back to the residents, should they not desire town to acquire the properties in exchange to continue maintenance. And with that, I can take any questions.
Councilmember Jensen.
Has there been any discussion with any property owners at this point?
There was a, one discussion that Tony had with one of the property owners in Trophy Wood, that there would be letters sent out, and no, no specific contact to discuss the terms of these agreements. My intention is to send a letter out, invite everybody to come in actually and have a meeting with me, and where I could discuss the potential for acquisition or returning the properties back to the individual owners for their, their own maintenance.
So, at this time, are we still maintaining the properties?
Yes, based on the direction that we got from counsel at the last meeting, we're maintaining all the properties until the pendency of this.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? Ryland?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what my desire is here, and my desire is either, one way or another, that ownership and maintenance line up. I'm not opposed to continuing to maintain, they're not huge pieces of property, they've been maintained for some time now. But if that is to continue, just for the benefit of future people sitting in this chair, figuring out what to do and how to move forward and how to, how to allocate resources, I would hope that we can figure out a way to at least bring the property under our control.
Councilmember Schaffner.
Yeah, so, when, if you go back in on the 24th, we made the motion, basically, to do exactly, you know, approach the property owners and do all those things that we talked about. But we were, the problem that, the reason that I brought this back is that we were very specific. So, we said, from the edge of 2 Lake Forest Drive to Hogan's Glen, so it basically cut off, if you can go back to that other slide, it cut off those two properties from Trune all the way to basically Lake Forest. And so, there's, there's two different sections there that we, we are maintaining that were not a part of that motion. So, I'm just going to read the motion and basically make another motion just to include Indian Creek. So, I make a motion that the town work to acquire the property along Indian Creek Drive that the town currently maintains in order for the town to own the property, to acknowledge to the property owners when the offer was, is made, that the town would maintain the land if they were willing to authorize the town to acquire the land, excluding the fence.
Is that your motion?
Yes. And, and let me just add this part, impending permission from all the homeowners to release their property for Indian Creek Drive, then the town would be responsible for all legal fees, surveying, and platting fees to acquire the land, allowing for the town to be responsible for maintaining the property.
All right, you have a second. Eric, did you get it?
Yes, sir. Did you not include Trophy?
What I did not include is the Woods, because we already have that, we already have that approved already. So, I'm just, I'm just basically saying Indian Creek, which will cover those two properties. We have the Woods and the one property already done. That's already, we've already made a motion, we've already, we've already made, you know, it's already passed.
Yeah, I just included that in for tonight's presentation, so you could see that we had looked at both.
Yeah, so what I'm doing is just making a blanket on Indian Creek for those properties that we, we were, we did not include in the last motion.
Thank you, Phillip.
All right, anybody else? All right, call for vote. All those in favor of the motion, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right. Thank you, Tom. Item number nine, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the June 12th council agenda and items from the town council future agenda items list. A, item number one, review negotiating with the town, with the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District number one, to transfer the title for the land that the annexed building is built on to the maintenance own and the maintenance building by wastewater treatment plant. And this has been on our future agenda list for some time. It was a normal cycle for it to come back to us and, or have any future discussion, and to receive some kind of direction as to how fast you want to try to get this back. I did check with Vice President of the MUD, and they have not had any discussion about this item with the current MUD board. So, that is where we stand on it. Anybody else have any comments about this?
Yeah. I, I think that we, Chief Carroll, when, when is our meeting with the MUD for the fire budget, do you know?
It has not been scheduled yet, but it should be according to contract by the end of July.
End of July. So, I would say that if we, I would assume that we're going to have a special meeting for that. I think we did that last year. I would try to add these two items to that agenda and discuss that with the, the MUD, and then there's a few other things that I would like to put on there. I think that if we perhaps have Tom get with Carmen and tell him this is our intention to have this in our July meeting, that then he can inform the board, and perhaps they can discuss this before we have that meeting. But I think the, the sooner we nail this down, and I think that was our whole intention is to work with the new board, the sooner we nail that down, I think the better.
All right, and Tom, I think you've already reached out to Carmen about a date, haven't you, to get together about the budget?
No, I haven't discussed that with him yet.
Okay. All right. So, the second, anybody else have something about A that you want to say? I agree that we need to set up a time to have some discussion, and maybe they need some discussion prior to us meeting. I'm not sure that at our budget meeting, that adding all of those items might dilute its purpose or make it really long, but we'll see how that can go after maybe you meet with Carmen, and he can get some input from his board.
And the only reason I bring that up is because we have that set aside just to meet with them, instead of having to do it at one of our meetings or one of their meetings. It's a night set aside for meeting with them, and that's the only thing on the agenda is, is us and them.
Okay. All right. Item B, which says item number three, receive an update from the town staff regarding entryway monumentation and landscaping for the town of Trophy Club. And so, Lisa, you're going to update us on that?
Yes. Council, Mayor, we have an update for the monumentation, wayfinding and park signage from the committee of that name. We met back in March, and the things that we talked about in that meeting, that we've kind of put together this PowerPoint for y'all. The signage types, we have three different kinds. There's the entryway monument signs, the wayfinding signs, and the park signs. Basically, I went through town and took pictures of a whole bunch of signs, all of our entryway monument signs, and then also identified a couple of new places that are potentials on the up, on the kind of limits of the town. As well, for wayfinding signs, we don't really have any. We have at least one that I've seen that is, seems kind of temporary. And so, we've come up with a map of basically not where those wayfinding signs would go, but just the areas that it would be calling out. And then, park signs, I've got a map of where those park signs are and some pictures of the existing signs, so that I can get y'all's feedback on, you know, which items are most important, and what about them makes them that important to y'all. So, for the entryway monument signs, like it says on the side, number one is this one right here on Trophy Wood. Two and three, there is a marquee and a logo sign at the Trophy Club entrance, and then Trophy Lake also has a marquee sign, as well as our roundabout sign. Six and seven are potential sites. One of them, the Marshall Creek one, would be on either one of those pieces, triangular pieces, at the either side of Marshall Creek and Bobcat, as you come into town from Roanoke. Seven would be up right next to the water tower, next to the high school, that would face people that are driving in from Roanoke as well. So, I have some, some pictures of those, as well as the vacant sites. So, this one's Trophy Wood. These are the two signs on Trophy Club. And this is our Trophy Lake, and then also our roundabout sign. This one is looking towards the high school on Marshall Creek, looking to the east, and so those two yellow dots are basically locations for possible signage, if the council is interested in that, for entryway. And same for this next one, this is Bobcat coming in, going south. Either there's space that we have on the north side of the driveway that goes into the water tower, or there's space on the median. This one right here is basically, we came up with 14 points of interest in town, Town Hall, any of the parks, the country club. And so, we've identified those, and we didn't, you know, we're looking to see, we can easily come up with some ideas on where those wayfinding signs should go, or y'all can tell us what y'all think, and also if you have any ideas on, you know, how, you know, what exactly those signs look like. This is an existing sign at Trophy Club and Trophy Park, just directing you so that you know which way to go to get to the park, as well as the Dog Park. And our Parks Monument signs at Harmony, and then also the Independence and Pool, and over at Trophy Club. Also put a couple potential sign, park signs here. One is at Freedom Dog Park, they don't have a monument sign. There is a metal sign that's on the chain link fence, but that might be a good place for a monument sign, as well as at Lakeview Park. That might be another one, because that's another, like Trophy Club Park, that we have a lease agreement, same here at Lakeview Park. So, that may or may not be one that y'all be interested in putting a monument sign at.
Question, is the Lakeview Park you're mentioning, is that the new soccer field place?
Yeah, yes, next to the school.
So, we really...
It may not be a good one.
We really haven't named it, because we don't own the property? Was that named because of some arrangement we made with the school district, or just coming up with a thought of a name?
That's just the name that I've been told it is called.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's in lease, I don't think it has a name or anything.
All right.
And that kind of makes sense for the, since it is a lease, and we'll get to Trophy Club Parks sign, its sign is a little bit different than the other signs, because it's also on leased property, so it's not an actual monument, because we'd have to go through the core for that. Harmony Parks sign, all these signs for Independence and the Pool and Harmony, all, they all look alike, but they are all in disrepair. Lots of cracking, and the logo is coming off. So, here's Harmony Park. These are Independence Park West and the Community Pool, and Independent Park East. East, obviously, is much newer than the others. West and the Pool, those are actually wooden signs in the middle that are, have deteriorated a lot, and the logos have completely come off, and it's also the old logo. At the Trophy Club Park, once again, this is just outside town limits and the core property that we have a lease with them, and so, this is their entrance sign, and as well as many other signs. There's also a trailhead sign over to the, see, right here, over to the right, says nature trails. As for other park signs, we've got, this first map has five, I believe, or maybe six, trailheads on it. There are, the one that we just saw in the last picture is the Gardens Trailhead at the top left. This one right here in this picture is the one on Skyline. And then, we also have several pedestrian signs, you know, no golf carts on the, on the path. Those are all over, they're various signs that, they're just run all over the place, so I'm not quite sure how many we have of those yet. And so, our next steps is just to finalize where we want any potential signs to be. Are there any signs that we would like to try to repair rather than replace? You know, decide on those things, and then contact some local universities that I've got a list of, and I've got, made sure that they have departments that, you know, like architecture and design and stuff like that, to see if they would like to perhaps take on this as a project, for a master's project or something like that, to design our signs. And in the process, we'll determine right of way and easements, and make sure all that that stuff is okay, and get a contractor to make our signs for us and install them. You have any questions?
Can Ryland?
Yeah, so, I have a thought on a way to at least maybe move part of this forward for us. When we initially started looking at this a while back, and it's, it's been a slow simmer, because, you know, obviously other things have sometimes taken priority. We were looking at wayfinding and entryway monuments, and we were looking at, at hot funds. I'm going to set that aside for a minute, and just look at the park piece of this, because the park stuff that Lisa just showed us, a, a good deal of it, we either already have something that's kind of a solution, that other things need either be repaired or just simply added. So, I'm going to look at Parks Monument signs, and I'm going to look at trailheads. We have a park, we have a monument sign at Independence East that's six, seven, eight years old, and it's, it's, it's there.
Back to that?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Sorry.
PowerPoint is... Yeah, so, anyway, the one in Indy East, there, that, that's, your problem is solved there. There's no reason to spend any resources to do anything with that. So, my recommendation, and I'll put this in the form of a motion in a minute, but I want to, I want to let you guys know what I'm thinking, is that our, our major parks that have a lot of active use should have monument signs brought up to that. We may not want to do it right away, but that should be our plan. And likewise, on the trailheads, you showed the trailhead at Trophy Club Park and the trailhead at Skyline with the rock and the thing. We already have a theme there. So, my recommendation would be any new trailheads that we've added that are within town limits, we simply replicate that, like there's one at Canterbury Hills, and there may be one somewhere else, I don't know. So, we don't, I don't intend for us to necessarily move this from, off of this topic, but I do want to make a motion to direct the town manager to ask staff to prepare a, a plan for trailhead signs and Parks Monument signs, that we can then just review in detail, just to get that piece knocked out. And it doesn't have to be, I'll let my motion sit in all of it.
Are you making that motion, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's a motion to direct the town manager to what?
To, to work with staff to bring back a plan for repairing and updated Parks Monument signs, and, and a plan for standardizing trailhead signs.
And I'll second that.
All right.
And so, just so you guys understand what my, my intention is, not necessarily that we're going to put it all in next fiscal year's budget, but just that maybe we would have a plan in place, maybe we would look at, you know, phasing it over a couple of years' worth of whatever, and, and getting, getting that down, and at least knocking that piece off of this and, and having a plan in place.
All right, so I'm going to speak directly to the motion. I had my name in the queue, had some other things, but I'm going to talk about the motion. I support that motion. I think the Harmony Park and the Independence East, I think, signs are potentially repairable and updated. Whether you tear down the, the concrete and block, I don't think you necessarily have to do that, but I think those really ought to get updated and look better than they do personally. The only issue I see is that we have Independence Park with a name, but we refer to Independence Park with two different, east and west. So, we need to kind of deal with that as you come back. If you're going to keep the name east and west, then does the one that just say Independence Park, which is the new one, need to get changed? I don't know. That's the recommendation. I like the idea that Ryland proposed, that the trailhead kind of monumentation, which is nice, big stones that have been engraved or sandblasted, I think that's really nice as a way to deal with that. I think that's, so, so I support your motion, because I think it stays with a theme, and I don't necessarily see myself wanting to support the building of brand-new total signs, unless you can't retrofit those. All right, Alicia, you're next.
For the signs that have the stone columns with the wooden inserts, I guess?
Yes.
Since over time, I mean, as soon as you refresh those and repair those, they start getting sun damage, they start fading pretty much within, what, a month? So, then, here we go again, waiting for the next time to refresh. So, I wonder what the cost would be to not tear down the columns, but maybe, you know, whatever, face them with faux stone, or stucco, whatever you do, to at least get a medium where it's not going to fade and deteriorate over time, so we're in this constant process of repairing and looking dilapidated and then repairing again, and it would just be more up to date with our current signage. And then, as to what Mayor said about east and west, I, yeah, if you're going to have two different, if you're going to keep those names, maybe that should be added to the sign, and then if, when the other one's updated, you add that as well.
All right, Phillip.
Yeah, I, I think that you go ahead and tear those down, those columns, those wood, that everything. I think that you probably would be wise to, kind of like what Ryland said, not reinvent the wheel, but, but base it on Independence Park, that sign, and perhaps replicate that at the other parks. The, the only difference I would make is that Independence Park is backlit. I don't think you need backlit signs, because our parks close at a certain time anyway, at dusk, or whatever that time is. So, I, I think that you do it sort of like that, and then it makes it look uniform. And my only suggestion on Independence, and I agree with Alicia and Ryland, is that it should probably say Independence East, Independence West, but I would also go a step further. I think you need to put Fields 1 through 4, Fields 5 through 8, because people who come into town have no clue where the fields are, or what, what they're doing. So, I think that you probably need to add that to the sign. But my recommendation would be just to, to basically replicate those. I think that's a nice sign. It's not cheap, but it's a nice sign.
Okay, so just for clarification, I'm okay supporting the idea of kind of rebuilding that, use that look of Independence Park, modern sign, and rebuild those other two signs potentially, but I think I want to know what that cost is compared to some inlay or repair. I totally agree with Alicia saying... I totally agree with Alicia saying, it really needs to something that sun is not gonna deteriorate or weather is not gonna deteriorate, deteriorate too bad, so. And great ideas, Phillip, about the number of the fields, uh, surely helping. I, I don't know enough for Harmony Park soccer fields, if there's, is there a map there that says Swerest Field 1, 2, 3, 4, wherever?
They usually put flags out in the, on the, actually in the middle of the field, like on the corners whenever they're playing. As far, as far as that, um, I, that is needed. I would, I would recommend that we think about multiple options there because something like, you know, Fields 1 through 4 and Fields 5 through 8 could be a regular metal sign on a pole or something, doesn't necessarily have to, and do, do the costs incur, that you would incur with trying to, you know, modify an existing monument sign to accommodate.
But I think you could put that on that, that column, just Fields 1, you know, something, something not, you know, elaborate, but.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion that's, uh, directing the town manager to work with staff and bring back some recommendations to the council to update and/or repair those kinds of signs, specifically dealing with, uh, Harmony, Indy, East and, or whichever one it is, at Independence Park. Aren't you ready to vote? All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, that motion did carry. Tom, are you clear on that one?
I am.
All right, and so, um, uh, Ryland, did you have any other motion you wanted to make?
No, sir.
You were headed towards? Um, okay, um, go back one slide and then go forward, let's see, all right. So that's Harmony, so we were including Harmony in that, right? Is that your intent, Ryland?
Yes.
That's one sign, and then if you go forward a sign?
You have the other two.
Those are the other two. So we are talking about three signs, just to make that clear. And obviously correcting how you're dealing with the newer Independence Park sign like east-west, what are we gonna do there? I think it's somewhat confusing when we hear Independence East versus Independence West. That's just me. But maybe people that use it all the time understand where those are, but that's just me. All right, uh, so, um, the entryway, uh, or the wayfinding, I think from my standpoint, a way to move that forward would be to, uh, bring the council, uh, maybe with the subcommittee's approval, three or so design concepts. I think those are more of a poll or something with, with words with arrows. I don't think those are too terribly sophisticated. I think you've identified a lot of the locations and a lot of the, uh, points of interest. Um, and so we could actually understand what that budget is. And so by the time we get to our budget cycle, which is coming up right now, if we wanna deal with that, we would be able to kind of deal with that. So that's my suggestion, um, to do that. Phillip?
Yeah, just to, um, give you an idea of what, this was sort of Tim's idea and he's not here tonight to, uh, to talk about it, but he wanted on, on this particular item, I think more so this than the entryways, but he, he was wanting to engage with the universities to get their talent to sort of give us those options. Instead of having staff having, you know, to come up with that, he thought that there were great, uh, opportunities at the university level to, to tackle this type of problem and, and probably would, uh, would welcome that, uh, to then make a presentation before us. And so that's, I think, where Lisa, uh, mentioned early on with her list of schools to approach and things like that, so. Just to, just to let you know where, that was Tim's idea and I thought it was a, a pretty good idea, actually.
I thought that Tim's idea was more towards the monumentation concept than it was the wayfinding, but I could be wrong.
I don't remember. Do you?
I thought he was wanting everything to go to the university.
It may have been. I think that, I thought that he was leaning more towards, uh, wayfinding than he was monumentation.
I, I can see that, yeah, based on the previous conversations we had on the, the subcommittee, I would agree with that.
But I think that he would wanna do it, if, if we did both, that he would, he certainly would want, you know.
I know we discussed making all the signs compatible throughout town best we can.
And, well, just let me, uh, say one other thing. It might be good to, at some point, I know we talked earlier about tree audits, but it might be better to do a sign audit, because I think, Nick, you and I talked about this, that there is the one sign that talks about overnight parking, but it references an ordinance that hasn't been in existence for, uh, I mean, probably 20 years. And so there, there probably, and kind of goes back to Peril's big platform, but there's probably a lot of signs that we don't need or that are outdated that we should probably be looking at. And then I think too, also, uh, Tom, that it might be good to get with Carmen and see exactly what the mud needs. Do they need all those signs? Or are there some signs that can come down that they don't need? Perhaps we can eliminate some of those while we're doing this exercise as well.
Alicia?
I know we talked about the, uh, the other parks, but I know Lisa had mentioned the Freedom Dog Park just has a metal sign on the chain link fence, so is that another way we wanna maybe consider putting some more, a more substantial sign out in front of there? And, um, the Country Club Pool and Golf Course, is that something that they would be interested in, in doing instead of having us do it? Cause I know, we just talked about the church doing theirs our last meeting, so.
Well, this is just for the wayfinding, so it's not for their, uh, monumentation at all. It's just letting people know that are coming into town. And any of those are up for discussion, any of those 14, just ones we thought made sense.
Alicia, thank you for, uh, bringing up the, the Freedom Dog Park. In order to expand upon direction, uh, I would make a motion that we direct the town manager to work with staff to come up with a design plan for Freedom Dog Park and bring that back to council at the first opportunity.
Ju- just to clarify before, um.
Let me see if I get a second if it dies.
Well, I, I need clarification before.
All right.
I'll make a second just to, uh, I'd like to clarify on Ryland's motion, was it not inclusive of parks?
Yeah, we just add it to.
Yeah.
Yeah, any.
I don't think we were specific to.
Yeah, any parks monument.
I know that, I know that you sort of mentioned it, Nick, these three signs, but I think his motion, I don't know if Holly has that.
All parks, yeah, so, cause I was thinking.
I kind of thought, because you were talking about those specific signs that.
I think it was just because they were up.
Yeah, that was, I, I'm more represent, cause that was my reason for wanting to go ahead and act now on it, cause obviously they need repair sooner, you know, sometime in the next couple of years probably at a little absolute latest, so.
All right, uh.
Include that in there.
Assuming that, uh, staff understands that intent, I would withdraw my motion if the second agrees.
I agree.
All right, so there is no motion on the floor. And, uh, Tom, I think, just to make sure, you're notes that the motion that was approved, that was made by Ryland included other park designated signs, even though we talked about several intentions. All right. Uh, anybody else? All right, uh, and so, um, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, because of your comment, Phillip, about Tim, who's on the subcommittee, the intent for monumentation was to try to engage with some university or college that might have some staff that would help design and come up with some concepts.
Right, right. They may have students that are studying that kind of thing, that know how to design signs and do the engineering for that and everything, that staff doesn't have that capability.
Counsel, any comments or direction in that area?
Yeah, I, I think his inten- uh, yeah, I think his intention was to not get locked into, the last time when we first, this was first brought to us, we were locked into that agreement and they didn't have a lot of wiggle room in that agreement. And so I think his intention was to perhaps present this to quite a few and see what they can come up with and then kind of go from there. If we wanna move forward with their ideas to affirm at, at that point, we can decide on that, but if not, that was his intention.
All right, um, Lisa, you need any more direction this time or any comments you have?
Sounds like I just need to get with some universities to, with all this info and see if they'll design some, some signs for us. All, like all of these signs, is that right? Okay, just wanna make sure I understand.
Well, at least that's the idea at this point.
Well, I think for the motion I made, the, the design language is already determined by the existing Independence East monument sign and the existing trailhead sign. So there's no reason to postpone work on a plan to deal with that.
We, we would treat that separately.
Yeah.
On the?
The park signage.
And so what, so, I understand.
Harmony Park, Independence East, Independence West, uh, those type of signs. You're following the Independence Park sign design.
Right.
So you're trying to replicate that, those other locations, providing new signage was what I think Ryland was trying to accomplish.
Same goes for trail, any trailheads that are out there that.
Okay.
So if you were gonna put a sign at the beginning of, uh, whatever, the Amenty Lakes Trail or whatever that's called, the Bobcat Trail, or however you're gonna do that, how that signage look is already directed by the fact that it's the big stones that are engraved that do that.
Okay, so you're looking, are you looking for, um, us to get into contact with someone on actually creating the signs or engineering the signs or the budget of it?
Yeah, it's in, yeah, that's.
That's it, yep.
Okay.
Obviously it comes back to budget.
Yeah.
At some point, money. All right, uh, all of this was, uh, being discussed under, uh, future agenda area for clarification. So counsel, call your attention to page 35, uh, which is our agenda for the next meeting. Does anybody have anything specifically that they wanna try to deal with in the last meeting? We are obviously gonna do the swearing in of, uh, Tim at that time. All right, any other, or so then draw your attention to, uh, future agenda list, uh, on, uh, page 37 and 38. Anybody have anything they wanna add there? All right, hearing none, we will then, uh, move on. So we are now on item 10. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem, discussion of same. This time I would open the floor for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I would, uh, move we nominate Philip Schaffner for Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I will then declare that nominations are closed and we will only have to vote that we are, um, naming, uh, Philip Schaffner as Mayor Pro Tem as being the only person who was nominated. Uh, all in favor of that, approving that nomination, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, it is unanimous and, uh, congratulations, Councilmember Schaffner, I guess, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, Schaffner. Make me change things now here.
Just got comfortable.
Yeah, I know, halfway there. All right, item 11. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. Um, at this time, does anyone wish to make any motions based on our meeting earlier of executive session? Hearing none, uh, we will then say that item 11 is dealt with and counsel, it is 8:25 and we stand adjourned. Eric. Be convened into our regular session at, uh, 7:19. And, uh, in just a moment, I will ask everybody to stand. Uh, we will be led in an invocation by Fire Chief Carroll and then remain standing for pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag that will be led by Councilmember Florrie. Please stand.
Joy, may prayer. Florrie, we thank you so much for today. Uh, we just thank you for our opportunities that you've given each and everybody, everyone in this room, the opportunity to serve God and to serve this town and to serve each other and to serve you. God, we just ask that you watch over, uh, all of our town staff and our public officials while we're here. And God, we just ask that you grant us the wisdom, uh, that is in you to make good decisions here tonight and in the best interest of this town. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to, they address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presence made to the council at this time concerning an item, item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor presiding officer. To speak during the item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, do we have anybody that wanted to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right, we will then move over, move on to announcements and reports. Uh, receive town manager class's update and provide input regarding the following: community pool opening, volunteer appreciation reception. Mr. Class.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone that our pool will be open for the season, uh, this Saturday, May 26th. And we would encourage all the residents, uh, to come by the pool at any point this week between 12 and 5 to pick up their pool passes. Also, on the 26th, uh, we're encouraging everyone to join the Metroport Veterans Association at 10 o'clock in the morning, uh, to assist with flag planting, uh, along Trophy Club Drive throughout Medallin Cemetery in honor of our Memorial Day, uh, weekend and Memorial Day on Monday. Uh, there will also be a ceremony for Memorial Day at the Medallin Cemetery, courtesy of the Metroport Veterans Association at 10 a.m. as well. And also, I'd just like to remind everyone that the, uh, town hall, uh, and the Trophy Club offices will be closed, uh, for Memorial Day on Monday, the 28th. And encourage everyone that needs to conduct business with the town to do so, uh, before Friday of this week. And then with regard to the volunteer reception, it has now been scheduled for June 21st. Uh, the e-vites has, have been sent out to the council, uh, to staff, uh, and also to our volunteers. Uh, we've received an outstanding response so far. We expect it to be a big event and, uh, we're looking forward to a, a great turnout. And with that, I'll ask for any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions of the town manager on these subjects? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item number three. Receive town council liaison update, discussion of same, park and recreation board, meeting of May 25th, May 21, 2018. Uh, Councilmember Schaffner.
Yeah, I actually, uh, again, was not at the meet. One more meeting and I guess they can kick me off the board, but, uh, no. Um, I was not at the meeting, but I did listen to the meeting today and, uh, you know, it, it's one of those things where I think we're, what were we, Ryland, a year or two ago where I said, I don't know why they don't have these meetings quarterly? Uh, there really wasn't anything on the agenda other than updates. They discussed, uh, doing a volunteer, uh, situation for, uh, auditing trees throughout town. They talked about, uh, doing a volunteer situation, uh, for the Trophy Club Park. I think that, uh, the, the garden area that is no longer maintained. And, and the rest of the time is just basically, uh, updates to what's going on in the park, so really not, not a lot going on.
What does auditing trees entail?
Um, they are wanting to, uh, you, they're wanting to, to, to do an inventory of all town-owned properties, an inventory of all the trees, whether it be Medians, Harmony Park, Independence West, but they, we don't have enough manpower and staff, so they're seeking volunteers and, and I guess it was brought to the, I'm not really sure why it was brought to the park and rec depart, or, uh, board other than to perhaps seek their blessing, I guess, I don't know, but it's, it's, um, I guess they have some kind of app, perhaps is what I gathered from the meeting, that they can go and put all this information in, it does GPS and then it will spit out, you know, something that if council ever asks or needed, uh, that would be available. So anyway, that was it, pretty much, pretty simple.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaffner. We go on to consent agenda. All matters listed on a, as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council. All matters listed on a, as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items four and five. Does anyone on the council wish to remove either of those items? Hearing none, I would then entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve consent agenda items four and five.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro, Pro Tem Rowe, submitted by Councilmember, uh, Florrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the vote, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Uh, item six, administration of the oath of office and presentation of certificate of election to Ryland Rowe, Councilmember Place Three, and at this time, uh, we would ask Judge Chambers if he would come up, and Ryland, if you would go down the front, please. Jill, are you filming or taking pictures? Photo, okay.
Okay, um, first we'll do the statement of appointed officer, uh, before the oath of office. Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value or promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which you were elected or as a reward to secure your appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right. And do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trophy Club Town Council, Councilmember Place Three of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
You need to sign with those.
Yes, he has the originals.
Okay, Ryland, I have a certificate. So we're gonna go back here and present.
Do you want me to find that? Oh, this is mine.
Oh, that's yours.
Yeah.
Oh, we did get, did we get?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go to bed.
I'll have.
Closet in the block.
Okay.
Yeah, I wondered about the copy.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I know.
Big seal.
Sized on here, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Johnny Hancock.
There you go, Ryland.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Chambers, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you so much for the privilege, always enjoy it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All right, at this time, we had planned to actually take a short recess and enjoy
some refreshments at the back, uh, so if that's, uh, council still wishes, we'll do that and then we'll come back for an opportunity for Ryland to make some remarks and council to make some remarks in reference to this.
Of course.
So it is 7:29, we will stand in recess.